Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Town of Camden Select Board meeting for December 14, 2021. The agenda and appropriate information can be found on the Town of Camden's website under the Select Board and under Agenda/Packets. We are streaming on YouTube. We are on 1303 Cable, and we have a Zoom connection. The connection is on our agenda. We would request anybody who would like to come in on Zoom to please, if they want to make a comment or ask a question, please use the Raise Your Hand option, please, only, and then we can try to address you and your questions and bring you onboard. If you're on the phone, the instructions for dial-in are also on the agenda. Please feel free to take advantage of that. In all cases, we'll need for you to identify yourself by name and/or residency. With that, we will start our agenda and start with public input on non-agenda items. Does anyone here would like to address a non-agenda item? Please. Please introduce yourself and your residency, and please respectfully stay within the three-minute.
I'll be brief.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Tom. Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this brief opportunity to speak.
Tom, could you introduce yourself, please?
Thank you. My name is Tom Hedstrom. I live at 24 Mountbatty Street. My 14-year-old son Theodore died in a building fire at 7 Mountbatty Street in February. It has been almost 10 months since Theodore's violent death, and the Fire Marshal has just recently submitted his report to the Knox County District Attorney. As you know, I have been trying to speak to you since June, but I have been denied being put on the official agenda. It is disappointing to me that there is not the political will on this board or in this town office to make public safety your highest priority. It seems that this board, our town administrators and local law enforcement, would rather that this tragedy just quietly go away than take a hard look at the mistakes that were made and the lessons that can be learned from them. As most of you are also aware, I am not satisfied with governmental inaction before and after Theodore's death. Many government agencies had opportunities to report and/or investigate unstable and illegal adult behavior that could have given other government agencies and me, as Theodore's father, more ability to protect him and my other children. In every instance, those government agencies chose not to take action. But make no mistake, Theodore would be alive today if they had done their jobs by enforcing our laws and codes and by documenting all the terrible adult decisions, illegal actions, and unstable and abusive behavior by the two adult residents at 7 Mountbatty Street. I have listed many of these below, but as this is a town meeting, I will focus on town issues. The Camden Police Department, proven and undisputed theft of more than $700 from my McGunt Cook Market account, no charges filed in 2016. Again, Camden Police Department, many and many reports and pleas from me, both adamant and earnest, about alcohol and drug use by minors on that property and about the safety of my children, no action taken for over three years. In addition to all that, there were no permits pulled for any work done on the building that burned, including the inexplicable disabling of the smoke and CO detectors, the new clothes dryer, wiring which did start the fire, and the pine box loft construction in which Theodore was trapped. That pine box loft had no legal egress, either primary or secondary. Theodore's only means of egress, his only means of escape, did not even count as secondary means of escape. In 2020, the Camden Town Office issued a permit for a new 16-by-20 storage building, the fourth accessory structure on a residential property with no legal residency. That permit was issued for a storage building only, and the property owner told the town CEO both verbally and in writing that there would be no wiring, no insulation, and no sheet rock, yet all those things were present before the fire and are still present now. There are numerous code violations in that new building, including, again, no smoke or CO detectors and no proper egress, and it was clearly intended to house my children, and the supporting documents for that are included in your packet. I have asked the chairperson of this board, the town manager, and the town CEO to cite and publish those violations, but so far, they have not done so. There was no certificate of occupancy for any structure on that property, yet in 2018, the town issued them a homestead tax exemption. The adult residents of 7 Mountbatty Street made a mockery of our national, state, and local laws and codes, and they purposefully deceived you and your staff of their intentions, all of which certainly contributed to the death of a lifelong citizen of Camden, my son Theodore. I would like the Town of Camden and the Camden Select Board to perform the following acts. Number one, enforce the notice of violation on the new 16-by-20 accessory structure, which you issued in March and did finally send an enforcement letter about in September, but have yet to act upon, despite being well past the enforcement deadlines you gave the property owner. Number two, the Camden Codes and Planning Office write an official memorandum detailing all the illegal constructions and code violations at 7 Mountbatty Street, in the building that burned, in which Theodore was trapped and died, and in the new 16-by-20 building, and also in the upper shed, all of these which can be submitted as evidence alongside the Fire Marshal's report to the Knox County District Attorney. Number three, commission a full and independent investigation into all the illegal activities and code violations at 7 Mountbatty Street from 2016 to present. This investigation should include why the Camden Police Department failed to enforce our laws that are designed to protect minors, and why the Camden Town Office failed to recognize that there was no certificate of occupancy for any structure on that property, even when a tax abatement was applied for and approved in 2018, and a permit for a new structure was pulled in 2020. Number four, the Town of Camden revised its processes to keep bad characters from the premeditated flaunting and violating of our building codes and tax laws, and that the Town adds teeth to these laws so that violators can be prosecuted, especially when they cause such terrible tragedy. I would respectfully request that these revisions be published and named in Theodore's honor and memory. Thank you again for your time. A large part of my future will be advocating for divorced parental rights, especially in cases like these, in which there was so little that a concerned parent could get the government authorities to do despite so much evidence. I also intend to advocate for municipalities' rights to enforce their own laws and codes with the goals that no child ever has to lose their life in such a violent and completely avoidable way again, and that no parent ever has to experience the constant grief and sorrow that I feel from the loss of my beloved son, Theodore. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much. Thanks, Tom. Any other public comment? From anybody in the public? No. Okay, with that, we'll proceed to item number two, which is the approval.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I know it's not on the thing, but is there a way for us to move forward at some proper way about this letter?
No. There's a lot of legal issues that go on, and Bill can relate to some of those if we want to, but most of all these questions, Audrey, have been addressed in documentation between us and Tom and others. Is that correct?
We've done everything to the extent of our ability.
Correct. So that information is available, Mark. If you're interested, you can check it out, but it's just heartbreaking, Tom. We feel your pain and understand there's more complicated issues around it. We won't address them, as you know, in a non-agenda item, but we certainly feel it. With that, I will move on to item number two, which is approval of board members on November 16th and November 30th.
I'm sorry. I was just trying to think about how to formulate a question, because I do think, and first of all, I'm just so sorry for your loss, and I really sympathize with the feeling that a lot of tragedies happen because of, you know, laws that are in place that should have protected people and weren't. What happened to my sister has some similarities. And I do get the question a lot of times or concerns from people about, you know, why isn't the town doing this, or sort of questions about enforcement and how it works in terms of the roles and responsibilities of the Code Enforcement Office versus the Select Board and Town Manager, and how we, you know, do we go out and proactively enforce things, or is it the complaint-based system? And how do we? It would be, I think, good for us at some point to kind of maybe have a workshop about how that works. I know, I think it's probably definitely inappropriate right now, certainly, to dig into the details of this particular case. I'm not aware of any of the correspondence and have really no in-depth knowledge of any of the issues, but in a more general sense, you know, a lot of concerns get brought up around town, and it's sometimes unclear how enforcement decisions are made and what ability anybody has to influence that or not influence that.
We could simply put that on the radar, and I think there's no reason why we couldn't do that. Thank you very much again. Thank you, Tom, for coming. You have to come up. Excuse me. You have to come up to the podium. Please identify yourself in residency.
I'm Chris Hedstrom. I live in Thomason, actually, but if you want to address it as a non-agenda item, how do you get on the agenda?
There's been a request to be on the agenda, and I've explained to Tom numerous times why it's not appropriate for the Select Board to be addressing these items.
So you won't address it?
We can't address it.
I mean, maybe just an explanation from an attorney at some point. It's a frustrating response that we get also, but it's usually for a legal reason, that it's just not within our purview.
That's correct. It's not within our purview. And Bill, maybe you don't need to get into detail, but what I just stated about it not being within the purview of the Select Board, is that accurate from our discussions or not?
Yes, and I appreciate that it's very frustrating that the process isn't perhaps as public as you or others might want it to be, but behind the allegations are suggestions that people aren't doing their jobs properly. There's also some process issues, but those types of questions, which I think are at root here, have to be dealt with through the manager's office by statute, by our charter, because when you start to question what an employee has or hasn't done, it's a personnel issue, and they have by statute various rights, and they have to go through the manager who has the exclusive authority to deal with that. So it might be frustrating that it's not public, but that's the process.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Do we appoint this code enforcement officer?
Based on the recommendation of Audrey, yes.
Yeah, and I manage them, so.
We're talking about the management, not the appointment of the person.
And also, a lot of this comes down to what? They have separate authority. They're an agent of the state in some ways, especially when it comes to building codes, and so there's a procedure around that and how they handle things. And I know the homestead exemption was brought up, and those things actually are not, the assessing isn't linked to code in that regard. So, you know, there's a lot of things that seem like they should be linked or intertwined or speak to one another that just don't, and they can't legally. So, you know, it's a bit more, in some ways, it's a bit more simple, but in other ways, it's a bit more complicated, and I think we all, just our hearts are broken for, you know, the loss of Theodore and what it's done to your family, and it's really devastating. And I think that the biggest takeaway for the Town of Camden is that we have building codes for a reason. We have a code enforcement officer for a reason, and I know that we're getting a lot of complaints about how fastidious our code enforcement officer is and the fact that it's being followed, and there are, you know, expectations set. We get complaints all the time about this, but this is a perfect example as to why life safety and building codes are important. And so I think that that's one thing to keep in consideration if you get complaints from people about how hard we are about making sure that when a project is done, it's done correctly.
I mean, I would also say that I hear complaints about the other side of the spectrum as well, and I'm not making any allegations myself, but I do think it's helpful to understand the process more, that like.
A lot of it is because people hope, I think that there's a hope that there's somebody going around and looking for code violations and enforcing them, and that's just not practical or possible. And there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of buildings that they don't conform to the building code because of age, because of, you know, work done by people that permits weren't pulled, whatever the case may be.
Right.
But I think that, you know, again, it's one of those things, it's very simple. We have a code, and we, you know, expect people to follow it. We can't go out and proactively enforce these rules, and we do our best to follow up on, you know, complaints when we receive them. We try to seek voluntary compliance by working with property owners or contractors to try to get them to remediate actions, because it's also a civil issue where we don't have the authority to go out and enforce this through financial penalties or whatever the case may be. We have to go through the courts, and we are at the bottom of the barrel of all of the things that the Knox County Court, you know, District Court is going to be looking at. Land use violations are not important to them right now, and there's a huge backlog because of COVID. So that's the unfortunate reality, that we're going to get the best satisfaction from working with people. It's a lot of steps of voluntary compliance.
I have one more question. Are there any ongoing procedures happening right now as regards all this or the ongoing that we can't talk about or discussions or?
Well, another time.
In regards to this particular issue?
Yes.
Well, there's a notice of violation that's public now for that, the one shed. We can't do anything about the building that's burned down. There's no ability for anyone to inspect it and find out what was in there, and not one person from the town set foot in that structure prior to it burning down.
There's also, I believe it's out, I certainly haven't seen the state Fire Marshal's report on this incident, I believe, but is it public yet? Is it what? That's what I thought.
And the towns ask for a copy, and we have to go through a procedure to get a copy, too.
I just mentioned it because there's a higher level of authorities is trying to look at this and try to take in all the evidence from a state level, and that's why also it's inappropriate for us to be commenting at this level against something that.
We don't even have all of the findings.
Excuse me, the state Fire Marshal's report comes out, then maybe something that we can see, but we don't know, I don't know what's in it, and I don't know if Tom does, probably not yet, but he will. But I want to point out something very important, Tom. We all feel your pain, believe me. We normally, in recent events, people have always questioned us about the non-agendimes. We typically do not allow any discussion because it's not on the agenda, and the main reason for that is, just to be clear, is that because it's not on the agenda, there's nothing in the packet for the public to view in advance notice of the meeting, and they don't have the opportunity to come, as you do, to perhaps in some situations provide an opposing opinion or supportive opinion. So, out of respect for you and your family, and your loss to your son, I feel and glad we had this brief discussion, but it's not over. It's not over, Tom, so hang in there. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Boy, I can feel that one. Number two, again, our agenda is the approval of the, take care, Tom. The approval of board members for November 16 and 30. Are there any comments from the board on the minutes?
Yes. On the 16th and 6A, you're quoted as saying, informed that the town has oversold snowball season passes. That's an incorrect term. We didn't oversell because there's still plenty of room on the mountain for the skiers. We surpassed the sales we had last year.
That is correct.
So that needs to be corrected, because we don't want to give people the impression that there's no room on the mountain.
No more room on the mountain.
Maybe you have room on the mountain.
Anything else, Mark, on the 16th?
That's it for me.
Anybody else on the 16th? Matt, you're scurrying for something. Do you have anything?
Just, there was a spelling of Dan Gabriel's name.
A spelling of what?
Dan Gabriel. Is it with an E at the end?
Yes, yes.
Good question. So again, then I would say that.
That's it?
That was all I found.
Anybody else?
I thought Caitlin did an excellent job.
I thought so, too.
A very difficult job.
Anything on the 30th?
I hope she keeps doing it.
Anybody, we can take them both at once if you want.
I figured we'd do them both.
And November 30th comments?
No.
No.
No? Motion for both?
I'll make a motion that we okay the minutes from November 16th with the two changes and the minutes from November 30th.
I second.
Discussion, all's in favor, 5-0. Thank you, thank you. Action items tonight, we have a couple. First of all is a consideration of committee appointments for three of our operating committees. In that regard, by the way, on our agenda, Audrey's graciously put in some great notes, probably just to keep me straight, but I think it's a good idea. But there are various documents in our packet that indicate who may need to be renamed or re-upped or new positions. Now, the first one I'd like to take is the harbor committee. Sophie?
I'm delighted to take it. So the proposal for the harbor committee is to ask Bruce Peel to become a regular member and fill that vacancy that we have and move Thomas Griffin and Margie Gross, who are two new people who have volunteered this year to serve on the committee, to move as alternates to the harbor committee. And by doing this, we're thanking Ron Hawkins for his service. I know it's been a long, long service to the town on numerous committees and I'm sure he'll understand and appreciate that we need also to have new people come in, share new ideas and new perspectives. So that's the proposal for the harbor committee.
So to summarize, Bruce Peel from alternate to regular member?
Yep.
And then Griffin and Gross to alternates and Ron Hawkins?
Ron Hawkins is retired.
Okay.
From the harbor committee.
Comments, anybody? Nope. Could I have a motion to make those changes, please?
Sophie, why don't you?
I move that we approve the new composition of the harbor committee with, to restate?
Yes, please, just to be clear.
With Elliot Thompson, Bob Perkins.
No, just the changes.
Just the changes, okay. So I moved that we approve the new composition of the harbor committee with Bruce Peel being, becoming a regular member of the harbor committee, Thomas Griffin and Margie Gross becoming alternates for the harbor committee. And the select board thanks Ron Hawkins for his service on the harbor committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion from anyone?
Sure. Can I just bring up one thing? So all of the current members whose terms have expired, which I believe that's everyone but Josh, you should make sure that in the motion you're renewing them.
I'm adding to the motion that Elliot Thompson, Bob Perkins, Mark Segan Tyler and Joshua Moore are being renewed.
Seconded the update.
Motion amended and seconded. Any further discussion?
Hi, Sophie. Was this discussed during the harbor committee meeting? Was this something that came up as the group decided this? What was the process?
So I had a conversation with Josh Moore, who is here today. It was not discussed at the harbor committee. We asked every member of the harbor committee to submit an email that's in the packet either telling us whether they're interested in continuing to serve or not. But I do believe, and Audrey, correct me if I'm wrong, that selecting the members of the harbor committee is in the purview of the select board.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
It is.
Any committee commission board.
Yep, correct.
But again, no discussion of this during the actual committee meeting?
No.
Any further discussion? Allison?
Yeah, I guess I can't quite tell if there's a point you're making about that or not, Matt, but I do think that it's really, appointing committee members is a really important responsibility of the select board. And I think it's probably one of the hardest things that we do because it's, you know, there's so much that goes on in town and so much of that does end up getting delegated to committees. And when, but since the committees aren't elected by the public, the, you know, the general public doesn't have the ability to choose, you know, especially the committees that actually have power. And so I know for me, it's been one of the most uncomfortable things about being on the select board sometimes is like whether to really stop and examine, like are, you know, each of the committees and are each of the members sort of representative of the concerns that I've been hearing? And sometimes I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's, you know, sometimes it is really important that we, that we take a, you know, a hard look at that and take responsibility for it as select board members rather than having it be generated always by the committee itself.
If I, so I like to make decisions that have some rationale, right? So I don't make decisions lightly. And first of all, I've attended one of the two harbor committees and was a really good harbor committee because it was a full slated one, so I got a chance to meet at least once all the members. And the second thing is when I had a conversation with Josh, we clearly identified guidelines about what we want to achieve with the composition of the board, of the committee, meaning people who contribute, who have interests, who have a diversity of backgrounds, who have a collaborative mindset. So we did have some guiding principles, and Josh, I'm looking at you, to make those decisions. So, because of course I don't know the members of the harbor committee as well as Josh has or other members of the committee, the board, but that.
Essentially by having a conversation with Josh, he really actually involved the committee. He's the chosen chairperson by the committee and that's a, you know, quite a level of involvement. So, thank you for thoughtfully going about this and it's not easy.
And also, I also, I mean, we ask for people to volunteer and volunteering, you and I and everyone on the board knows, it's a tough job because we're committed, we do the work, we read the documents. And I think that people who step up to the plate should have a chance to experience the joys and the pains of volunteering on committees. So I'm also looking forward to kind of refreshing, you know, having new blood on committees and new ideas and new perspectives. So that was also another guiding principle in our decision-making.
Other comments? With, that'll take a vote. All's in favor of the motion amended, motion 5-0. Thank you very much. Now onward to the, let's just take just the appointments for pathways next, which we have a number of members whose terms are expiring, I believe. Is that correct, Allison? There's a document in here that shows all that. Let me just flip to it.
Both one regular member and two alternates.
Yes.
So basically, we're looking at Jeff Scott as, is expiring, Jane Self is expiring, and there was one vacancy. Correct? Is that right or not?
There's one vacancy.
Am I reading this correctly?
Well, we did some last time.
That's what I thought.
This is confirmation that I was not correct, what needed to happen.
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe that this, so this document hasn't been updated with the appointment that we made last time.
Okay, okay.
So that's Will Galloway was.
Well, that's, that's on there.
Is what?
It's on there.
Will Galloway is there.
Yeah, Will Galloway is on the list, is 2024, third one down from the top.
Oh, I have a different list.
He's not in yellow. I think you're looking at this document was what we're looking at in the packet.
I'm looking in my packet at a.
There's the one earlier in the packet.
Here, you've gone past it.
It's, um.
That's challenging.
Yes, yes, it's right after the.
Got me!
You got two of us in this on the table. Right after the minutes.
It's one, it's one regular member and two alternates. So it's Jeff, Jane and a vacancy.
Allison to check in.
Matt is also, we are on the same page, totally aligned, just.
Well, it must be something about that end of the table. No offense, Bill. Okay, so basically.
Right after the minutes.
Yes, after the last minutes that were, we just approved. We have a document called Committee Board Membership Expiration. There you go. There you go.
Doesn't make a lot of sense in terms of the order of the, but I mean, I guess, okay, so.
So we have three spots.
It's, anyway, we have, we have, yes, according to, as I read it, we have three spots, which are Jeff Scott's chair needs to be re-upped if we desire, Jane Self needs to be re-upped and there's one alternate vacancy.
All right, well, I need to pull up my email, I guess.
Yes, one vacancy that I see.
I'm really not aware that there are alternates on, but Jeff Scott most definitely, Jeff Scott and Jane Self.
Yep, yep.
Should be reappointed. We already did Andrew and Will.
And Will, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, the vacancy, I think, is in dispute. I don't.
Why don't we just, why don't we just proceed for the sake of?
Hold on, let me.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me just see what.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry for the chaos.
That's all right.
Committee member status, email from Jeff Scott. Please find my, please let me. Don't see that we need to do anything more than.
Jeff and Jane.
Jeff and Jane and the alternate position. I think that's one of the meetings that people should be encouraged to attend if they're trying to decide if that's a committee they want to be on.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see any urgency to appoint another alternate tonight, but I'm.
All right, that's no urgency. Mark?
I can just add that Samantha Scharf, is that?
Scharf, Scharf.
Had mentioned that she's open to being contacted for any opening.
She did.
Yep.
I think my suggestion previously is that we talked to her about the Conservation Commission because that's where we.
Well, yeah.
Say she was, she was open to that.
Oh, good, okay.
Please note she's also listed on the Cemetery Associate, but with that, let's move, could we get a motion to reappoint Jeff Scott and Jane Self?
So moved.
Have a second?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion from anybody?
Just a quick question. It says regular members are three, but then we would have Jeff Scott, Jane Self, Will Galloway and Andrew.
No, three years.
What?
Three years.
Years, yeah.
Glasses.
Yeah.
Useful tools.
Any other questions? Any further discussion? All's in favor, 5-0. Thank you, thank you, folks. Thank you so much to our last item.
It takes a village.
It takes, it takes herding sheep, yep. Now, the last one we have is Cemetery Association, which has one vacancy and it has one to.
So no, you need to appoint four members. One term will expire in 2022, one term will expire in 2023, and then two of those terms will expire in 2024.
Understood. So basically, the Bob Oxton, Jeff Weymouth, Chip Late, and those three need to be reappointed. And there's a vacancy for one person for which we have a couple of citizens interested to serve.
I feel, sorry, I'll raise my hand. I mean, a lot of this is in the way it's presented, but I mean, the, our task is to appoint members. And so the fact that somebody is already serving is not, that does not mean that our task is to reappoint them.
That is absolutely correct. That's absolutely correct.
It feels like that's being said as if it's a, that was never the intention, the way the ordinance was written.
Absolutely, absolutely. In fact, turnover is a good thing, but you're absolutely right. We're just pointing out that, to your point, three people whose terms have expired and they need to be replaced or they need to be reappointed and we have one vacancy. So that's the discussion point for Cemetery Association.
Yeah.
Okay?
One thing about Cemetery Association that's important for, I think, everybody to know is that it, we actually have a cemetery ordinance. There are bylaws for the Cemetery Association. It does function in a very similar way to advisory, you know, all the other advisory committees in the sense that the select board by ordinance is tasked with appointing members of the Cemetery Association. And then, once, once we do that, it's the Cemetery Association Board of Trustees that makes decisions about, for the most part, about the hiring of the sexton, policies related to trees and the, you know, they set the budget, they, most of the decisions about the management of the cemetery are made by the Cemetery Association and then they send us a bill. So our ability to impact what happens at the cemetery, for instance, when we hear things like, you know, when Beatty came, for instance, and said she was concerned about the notice that trees were going to be cut down or concerned about this process, our ability to influence that in most cases is very limited other than our ability to appoint people. And so I think a lot of the time people come to us and they say, well, they're hoping that we can make a difference in a certain area and that it's important for us to recognize these are the ways that we can influence things and these are the ways that we can't.
Well, and I think that in general terms, we stated before in meetings, I think the turning over some membership is a good thing to do to rejuvenate and keep committees proactive with different viewpoints, different perspectives when those situations occur. What I'm really saying is just because you're in the committee doesn't mean you're automatically re-upped.
Right.
That's all. So with that, do we have any recommendations for these, well, for action items, Mark?
Oh, I have a question. I'm in favor of renewing the three members that are there and we have a vacancy. And we have one person, I believe, that's here, that's been here for the second meeting in a row, that's applying for a position and I'd like to hear from them, talk about it.
Well, if you'd like to, it's more than welcome. If it's his decision, I think you asked the same question last time.
Just happy to help if you want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Allison, you're the liaison. Do you have any recommendations?
Okay. So I feel that this is very difficult because in general, I think that, you know, turnover is a good thing, but also it's, you know, there's a lot of nitty gritty stuff and we do have very committed members who have a lot of knowledge and they've been doing, you know, Bob and Jeff and Chip, I would very much struggle to say, okay, guys, we've got some, some new interests, so we're just going to be done with you. I think that would be bad for the committee to just get rid of them. But I do think that we have new, some new interests that would be really beneficial. And I spoke with, maybe Sophie, let Sophie, interesting, Sophie has some thoughts?
Yeah, so I don't know, again, so I'm new to this, so I don't know everybody on the, on the committee and I'm going to trust, you know, Allison, your experience working with them as a committee liaison, but I read the applications that were submitted in the package and it struck me that Owen was, would be a particularly good candidate to fill the vacancy. So in my limited knowledge, and I haven't spoken with him, just to be clear, I just read, you know, his background, I think it would be interesting to have him. I think it's always interesting when we have new blood and new, younger people who want to help us, you know, make our town a better town. So that's my recommendation, but.
I mean, I think Owen is a fairly easy one personally for filling the vacancy. It'd be hard pressed to find somebody else that has, you know, is a stonemason and skilled in taking care of cemeteries.
Okay, that's good.
And hopefully, what are your feelings about trees? I mean, is the tree thing is something that, I mean, I think it's, we never do this and it's.
But we haven't done it for any.
We had, we had somebody come here last week that was, sorry.
We haven't done it for any other members of the committees.
I know, I know.
But I mean, I'm, it's nothing against you, Owen, frankly.
No, it's not, no, it's not.
It's just that measure of fairness.
Yeah, I think it's a measure of fairness and because, one second.
Austin, Camden, and I guess like the question is like, what is the measure of fairness? What do you expect from your committees? What do you want for these end goals? What is consistent, what's not? And maybe some of that needs to be shored up in the form of bringing Cemetery Association membership in or their chair and to have this discussion about, are you comfortable managing all of the trees and vegetation? We have a tree warden. Like what's going on with the mowing contracts? What's the relationship between these separate entities? And doing it by kind of, you know, a daisy chain can be difficult and this is like you've been talking about, your all's responsibility.
Yep.
And I'm just happy to lend whatever knowledge I have for Cemetery Association and maybe help so that you have a good plan going forward, so you don't have these type of questions when you get to these reappointment moments.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Owen. Thank you. I think I agree with Sophie. I think the, the issue here is one of, is running for the Select Board. People ask me what my politics are. I, I don't respond to questions like that. Yeah, I don't think, but other, other recommendations?
Well, the thing is, this is a particularly uncomfortable situation, because we've asked the, you know, just to put it out there, I, I spoke with the chair of the Cemetery Association, and the, there's a difference of opinion in terms of the value, um, you know, he, he made very clear, he understood there was more interest, um, that they have their recommendation. I think that, um, you know, I think Stuart is a, I can definitely see why they recruited him. He has a lot of knowledge of the town. He's volunteered more hours than, um, most, um, with the snowball and so many other things. But I do think that's a little bit, um, of a, of a potential conflict with being a, a Parks and Rec employee, given the fact that the town has a contract, you know, we, we contract with Cemetery Association. So Parks and Rec does the mowing for the cemetery, um, that, you know, there's a value assigned to that. So it's just a little bit too much. Really, the Cemetery Association, their contact, um, should be with a department head or with Audra. And I think there's a little bit of, um, potential, just in terms of, like, precedence.
A little cloudy.
Setting, yeah, I think it could, you know, muddy the waters, and we generally try to stay away from things like that.
Yeah, and I would recommend if they want staff presence, um, especially from the Parks and Rec Department, that's something that we can certainly provide, but not through the channel of appointing a staff member to the committee.
Yeah, you know, possibly as an ex officio member or something, or.
For purposes of discussion and to move things along, I'm gonna make a motion that we reappoint Bob Oxton, Jeff Waymoth, Chip Late, and appoint Owen Cassas as the, the new member for the Cemetery Committee.
I second, yeah, that sounds like a great.
Motion made in second. Further discussion?
Um, just that I think Nancy also seemed.
Yes, very much so.
Great, and that, um, maybe that's in the, in the year to come, we could have more of a conversation with the association about how to, you know, how to recruit more people and how to let more people get involved. Maybe there's an opportunity to volunteer without being on the board, or, um, but, that we should, somebody should write to Nancy, and maybe that's my job to say, hey, why don't you start attending some meetings, become a little bit, you know, knowledgeable, and, um, we appreciate the interest.
Any other, any other comments, just discussion?
I just.
Sure.
I, I just have a couple of comments, and maybe it's not the place, so cut me some wrong, Bob, but it seems to me that, so for me to make, to make an even better decision as a Select Board member would be to know how long these people have served, maybe rethink, um, or think about, uh, creating some term limits to encourage turnover, and also, you know, have conversations on the composition and the, the goal of the committees, maybe, you know, as Matt kind of suggested. But I, I, I wanna, I think those points would, would help us make better decisions, uh, more transparently, and, and also will, will help with, uh, turnover and having new people be able to join, and being able to foresee when they can join.
I would agree with both. I think it's absolutely.
It might be helpful to have the association come sometimes, and, you know, different committees come and present and have a conversation with, with the board about, you know, things we hear and things they hear, and.
I would agree with, with both items for future reference, because I think it would help reinforce our committee work.
Yes, here's another question. Sorry to add another layer of complication to this. Which members, which two are you going to appoint to the 2024 term? Which one is 2023, and which one is 2022?
Yeah, good point.
Art, what did you intend with your motion?
Exactly my point. I don't know how long they've served, so it's hard.
I'm looking at the, the previous, um, Bob Oxton is the one that, 2020, so he would be the, um, the 2022 term.
No.
Or 2023, then Jeff and Chip would be 2024, and then Owen would step in for, till 2022, and, you know, give us a chance to evaluate this young lad and see, see how his work is. So that would be.
Is that clear?
I would add that to the.
Any comment?
I mean.
Start.
I think it's, I think there is no perfect solution.
Nope, nope.
And that it, it maybe is a little, it doesn't totally jive with the goals if we're taking the.
Yeah, I would agree.
Newest person and saying.
So Owen is filling a term that was not finished?
Yes, yeah.
So at 2022, well, next year, we do this again, Owen.
Yes, we do it next year. Anyway, any further discussion? All those in favor? Is your hand up? Are your glasses up? No, that's, I had to say that. Five zero, thank you very much. Onto our next, sorry?
Mixed feelings about trees, but in cemeteries, they're sacred, and they really add to the ambiance.
Thank you. Thank you, we're gonna hold you to that.
I just got a really inappropriate text message from a member of the public about this.
Okay, that's fine. Um, the next item is the, we should, um, confirm our appointment of Select Board Liaisons to active, uh, active committees, boards, and commission, commissions, which are listed here.
That's all the way at the bottom.
I believe, didn't we already appoint Sophie to one of these already?
Yes.
So the Harbor Committee is done.
Sophie's officially the Harbor Committee Liaison.
And why would we have a liaison to the Budget Committee?
It's all of us.
You don't.
It says all of us.
It's all of you. They don't let us talk during meetings, but. So that would be.
So Conservation Commission.
Current membership list that you were looking at?
Yeah. Do you want to do that one yet?
Can we have one conversation at a time?
Yeah, I was, I really appreciate it, yeah. If, if you don't put your hand up, you're not gonna talk.
If you want, I can tell you, it's on your agenda notes, but the ones that you need to appoint liaisons to, Conservation Commission.
Right. Pathways, Cemetery.
Cemetery, Planning Board.
ZBA.
And ZBA.
Okay. Now, the question on Conservation Commission, we have no active members this time. Do we want to assign a liaison at this point or not?
I mean, I'll say that I really want to be the liaison, um, but.
No, I mean, it's fine with me. I think we should. I think we can, just one thing we don't have to do downstream. So, um, does anybody want to make?
I, I do have a comment about the, and the committee listing. Nikki Duderia had resigned from the committee, so she's not active.
Don't, don't look at that. That's just a list to show you what we have.
Membership. We're looking at the only liaison for the committee, so Conservation Committee Liaison, Allison has expressed interest in being a.
I'd done it previously and enjoyed it, but I'm willing to give it up to Allison.
I think she's done a lot of work on the write-up for their charter and should, not charter, but their, their plan, and I thought I would support that, so.
I mean.
Let's move.
It's open to everybody, so I really, I really do think it's good when we all kind of pay attention.
I make a motion that we appoint Allison as the liaison for the Camden Conservation Commission. I don't know that we need a motion, but there it is.
Yeah, we should. Second?
I second.
Discussion? Alls in favor? Five zero, thank you. Um, to see our Pathways Committee, which I believe currently is your liaison, Allison, is that correct? Okay. Um, comments?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Allison as the Select Board Liaison for the Pathways Committee.
Second, late, can we have one conversation at a time, please?
He was just saying, asking me if I.
I know, but that's two conversations going on at the same time, okay? It's just, I, you can.
Yeah, it's reasonable, it's a reasonable.
Sorry, gang, I have to slap my wrist. But I'm one of the worst at this, by the way, so, um, but to, so I have a motion, but no second yet. On the Pathways Liaison, Allison.
I will second for the purposes of discussion.
Discussion.
Need to go, so.
Now discussion.
Now discussion.
Matt, you want to go first, or Allison?
Yeah, just go. I just want to make sure, um, you're comfortable taking on. You're good?
I, I really enjoy the Pathways Committee, but I also think it's lovely to have new blood and turnover, and anybody that wants to experience the joy should, you know, I don't, you know, I think it's good for us to kind of attend these other, you know, pay attention to what's happening, so.
It's not, it's not limited, I.
And I am not accepting full responsibility for everything that comes out of the Pathways Committee either, so.
Come visit.
Keep your eyes open.
Okay.
All yours, if you want.
All right, any other discussion, Matt?
No, thank you.
No, welcome.
Just keep in mind, the next one is a Cemetery Associate.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know. All those in favor? Thank you. Yes, and the next one is Cemetery Associate, which Allison's also currently the liaison for.
Maybe this is why I feel like we have enough committees, I'm like.
Heard that before.
As a matter of discussion, um, it seems strange that Allison is the chairperson, or the liaison for all three of these, but there are a lot of committees that are not effective. I, I've worked at a lot of committees, and, you know, as they come back on, I'm interested in pursuing the ones that I've had, and there's also one other, uh, appointment I need to discuss when we're done with this.
Okay. Now Cemetery. Do you have a motion?
We need two. I don't know.
Two?
People.
Why?
Liaisons. I'm just.
Okay, we've done it before.
To, to use a bad joke, uh, oh, Matt, Sophie, either of you dying to be on the Cemetery Committee?
I couldn't resist. Really? He really went there.
We've had, we've had co, we had, uh, previously Harbor Committee was co's myself and, and Taylor back when. Uh, we have had a number of times we've done that, so that's possible. If you'd like to do that, just, Matt, all you have to do is shake your head, yes.
Right, well, I was gonna suggest maybe co-ing the pathways to, to break that up, and then, can we revisit that?
Do anything you want.
I'm happy to be your co, also.
Yeah, that would be up to you, dude.
Maybe we should go over the roles and responsibilities of the liaison, which, that's one thing that we've never really come to any shared understanding of.
Well documented in our guidelines for committees.
I think it.
That we approved a year and a half ago.
Oh, well, well, Bob, and I feel really stupid for having said anything, then. Why don't you just remind me of those really quickly?
Well, basically, basically, it's just act, act as, as, as what a liaison is, is to, uh, have input on, on, uh, procedure and policy of the board. You don't represent the board, obviously, because you're one person or two persons, um, and, and basically to make sure that, especially now, that these entities are staying on agenda. Or also, Select Board reports, which originally designated to be, was for us to come back to the rest of the board and, and comment on anything that liaison thought was relevant that the board should hear. That should, should still be a regulation. That's what it says.
I mean, yeah, I, I.
That's what it says. Been so many words. But do we want to go back and make two for any one? Um, now's the time to, to raise your hand and do it.
It'd be great as a co- liaison to the Pathways Committee, and maybe transitioning towards.
It's greater, uh, yes, so I would like to revisit the pathways. How would you like to do that in terms of a motion?
Not a motion, supersedes the previous one.
Oh, no, we need three people that voted in favor to agree to revisit, according to.
I agree. No, no, it's true. Robert's rules. I, I'm just stunned by the fact, she just pulled Robert's rules out of thin air, so, okay.
I would like to make a new motion.
It's a new motion. You don't have to go back.
I'd like a motion that we appoint, uh, Matt Siegel and, and Allison as, uh, co-chairs or co-liaisons for the Pathways Committee, and Sophie and Allison as co-chairs or co-liaisons for the Cemetery Committee.
Association.
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 Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Alls in favor?
Good.
Five zero, thank you.
I have one more to bring up that's not on here.
We haven't finished the Planning Board and ZBA.
Oh, sorry.
The Planning Board, I think historically has been Mark. Correct?
It has been me for years and years, although I'm curious if that's something that Matt wants to take on scene, as how he was a member of the Planning Board.
It would be like going back, I can't go back. I, I, I love them, but I can't.
Okay, then I, I would be glad to, to stay on as the Planning Board Liaison. I enjoy it.
I'll come visit you, I promise.
I move that we name Mark Rattner liaison of the Planning Board.
I will, I will second that.
Discussion.
So the Planning Board, I feel, is a really big one, and, um, I am not saying that I want to be the liaison. I just want to figure out a way for there to be more communication between the Select Board and the Planning Board. And for the last couple of times we've had an ordinance, um, I've felt a little bit caught off guard, and, not that that's anybody's fault, you know, we can all say that at any time, like, I was caught off guard by this person on the street that, um, and so I understand that it's my responsibility to pay attention to, um, but in general, I, I, it would be great if we could just do some kind of, I don't think it's really the responsibility of liaison, because there's so much to, there's so much going on that it's hard to put that on one person. That's kind of a staff responsibility, I think. But I think we should just at some point have a conversation about how we can.
Better intertwine.
Sort of intertwine our priorities a little bit more and decide, okay, what are the things that we really want to work on? Because if they do stuff, and then.
It doesn't work, yeah.
Then we have to approve it. I've seen it happen before, where stuff ends up coming to us, and we're like, oh, no, and then it's a lot of wasted time for them, and, and you, just.
Okay, I think there's, there's two things. Uh, it's listed, Jeremy is the Development Director, and is, obviously, sort of helps, uh, he doesn't run the, the Planning Board, but he sort of helps them go through the process, and we could have him speak about the specifics, which he does a lot, and also maybe have the Chair of the Planning Board come on a semi-regular basis when there's things that we need to know, so that they can do a presentation. I think that would be a good thing to do.
All right, we're digressing. Let's, let's go, let's address, no, I think it's all good ideas, but let's address the, um, the motion at hand. Any other discussion on the motion? Alls in favor? Five zero, thank you very much. ZBA, who was the liaison ZBA?
I will admit to not being the greatest.
Oh, what doesn't, oh.
Just, just, you know, just so nobody else has to say it.
Pure honesty.
So you're resigning?
You know, I may.
Withdraw.
I do think it's important. Um, I don't, you know, any.
I'd, I'd like to inquire, is this one, Matt, you'd be comfortable with, understanding more of this than probably anybody else on the board except for Bob?
Oh, I mean, I just, I know a little bit about it.
I didn't say, I didn't say a little.
It's not a reflection on.
I understand what the ZBA does, it's just that I haven't been.
Right.
Reporting back, and they oftentimes, I will say, that is one that has a very difficult time, having a quorum.
Yes.
And it's also very, um, the way that the roles are worked out, it's kind of this awkward thing, because it sometimes seems like the types of things that they're reviewing really should be, would be better reviewed by the Planning Board, but, um, anyway.
Yeah, I, you know, in a way, it means ZBA relates to Planning Board, by the way, uh, very closely, so there's some logic for, for Mark to be considered there. I, I don't, I don't know. I, I can, I can understand this, and that doesn't meet very often.
No, especially because they have trouble with quorum, but, um, I mean, but it's an as-needed thing, and so when there's a, applica, there's somebody wants to tear down a house and then rebuild it in the shoreline zone or something like that.
Right, right.
But it's, uh, it's oftentimes things of great public interest, and.
Absolutely.
It is oftentimes not well communicated to the public ahead of time.
Right. One of the most important things the town does is zoning-related issues, and I agree.
So people are like, why did that happen? It's like, well, there was this ZBA thing. If you look in the corner of the Camden Herald, you know, ten, it was, it was there, and, but we don't make the same kind of effort to get, you know, all of that stuff doesn't go on the Facebook page like the Select Board meetings, and so a lot of the time, people don't realize where the conversation occurred, and that they, you know, already missed their opportunity.
Recommendations?
All the reasons why I could have been a better liaison, I.
No, that's not, I don't, that's not an issue. I think you're, you're on a lot already. I think it's a good idea to spread some of the wealth, but I think it really.
Well, maybe we tag, do you want to tag, tag team this one as well?
I think you'd be great on.
Okay, well, apparently, I'm being handed.
I don't think you need my help, but.
No, I just, um.
Could point out to you some of my, my observations.
Matt, do you want to try, try add it?
Sure, I'll, I'll take, again, I have a previous experience with planning and zoning, so.
I know you do.
I'll have you do.
Motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Matt as the liaison for the ZBA.
I second.
Discussion? He hesitates, hesitantly. All those in favor? Five zero, thank you.
No, no, the hand was down. I was abstaining.
Oh, you, it's, Mark, you had a comment you wanted to.
Uh, I have been attending the, uh, Library Board of Directors meetings on a regular basis recently, and Nikki keeps asking me if I'm gonna be the official person. And I said I would like to be, and, um, so I'm bringing that up this evening to see if, uh, you want to go ahead and appoint me as the, uh, liaison for the Library Board of Trustees.
Or, or, or co-liaison.
Her co- liaison.
I, I.
She keeps asking if you, if she should be sending.
She's eager to get rid of Bob, huh?
Well, no, no, what's happened, frankly, what's happened is, um, I stepped in when Jenna kind of left, and, and just as an interim, brought him. And then the meetings were, have been conflicting on Thursdays with my other schedules. That's what caused that issue to occur. It wasn't that I. to occur. It wasn't that I didn't want to. I was more than happy to. And I...
She keeps asking me if she should be sending you an invitation.
And she, and she does.
And I told her previously, yes.
Yes.
And she asked me again this week when I was...
So I wouldn't, I would suggest nothing less than a co-liaison on this one. If it's okay.
Absolutely.
So...
So I move...
Move.
That we name Mark Ratner and Bob Fanchani as co-liaison of the library board of trustees.
I'd second that motion.
Discussion.
It's actually a little bit outside of the library ordinance and the, and the bylaws. But I, I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna, gonna sue us over it. We're allowed to top one. But really, the meetings are supposed to be open to the public and all of that. So there's nothing to prevent all of the select board from showing up.
As with every committee.
Right.
That's true.
But I do think that it would be great if we could encourage them, or the liaisons could, to have their meetings. I know they've been doing them by Zoom. And so that's been, that's allowed a few more people to sort of participate. But to, since it is a quasi-municipal organization, it, I think it would be good to...
Because they haven't been open to the public, to my knowledge.
They've been, you know, theoretically open to the public. It's not that anybody's been prevented, but it's not really published that much. And also, the law, the, you know, all of our town committees have gone to live streaming. And that's, you know, just a really important way for everybody from the press to the public to be able to follow along. So I know that we don't have control over them, but I think it would...
No, no, correct.
...be noted that...
No, that's a good point.
Love it to be live streamed.
Have the abilities to livestream?
Oh, yeah, yes. Yeah. Do.
Oh, yeah.
Then we can, Bob and I can certainly recommend it.
I think, that's no reason why not.
It is nice to be able to watch those meetings and...
Or, or be able to watch them after the fact.
Exactly.
You know, I totally agree with that. Especially if one of us shouldn't make it, I'd have to watch it. But anyway, to that end, further discussion, all those in favor? Five zero. Thank you very much. The other item that we have under is, actually, that's in the action items, we're into discussion items. And that next one is to, is the, basically the draft road opening ordinance for town meeting. It's not, I'm sorry, there's actually two. And I went right past, I'm sorry, the first one, the first one, there's two discussion items. And they're both the same kind of action, thanks to Audra clarifying all that. And basically, it related to the, one's a charter possible amendment for the June ballot. And the other one is a, an ordinance we discussed at last meeting, which is the road opening ordinance, again, suggested for, I hope to get to the June meeting. And in each of these, what I believe the select board is being asked to consider, and I think it's smart, is a, over discussion, is a board liaison to work with whomever to develop the, the cow so they can be brought to the table, to the whole board for carving it up and eating it.
Good way of putting it. And I think this is to the...
Where does it say that?
It's in there.
Didn't put the cow in the carving out of cart, but, you know.
Is this, these notes that everybody's...
It's in there.
Oh, in the, okay, okay. A select board liaison to the road opening ordinance?
Yeah, okay. So here's the idea. You know how Sophie presented the issues log and assigning select board members to each issue? I think that this will be helpful in that anybody who really wants to sort of work with, you know, myself, a department head, or Bill, to kind of understand the issue better and then communicate it back to the board when there's discussion about it, will have the opportunity to do so. You're making a decision as a board as to who's going to be sort of directly involved in this. And it sort of cuts down on the, I think...
Cross chatter.
The cross, I think the cross chatter is a good way of putting it.
Will it cut down on the cross chatter is the question, though?
And I'm finding a lot of requests for information coming from the board that I just can't keep up with. And I feel like this is a way of sort of managing that a little bit better if I have somebody to work with directly on all of these that can help me sort of communicate this information back to the rest of the board.
This is a little smaller scope, but we're already doing this with certain initiatives and priorities, the river, EMS, internet, you know, it goes on and on and on.
Parking.
Parking, parking. Bob has nothing. But...
Looking nothing to Bob.
You've got the whole energy efficiency upgrade and all of the...
Hey, he's recovering from...
I'm done.
Bob's retired after that one.
No, I'm still throwing out from last January 26th. But...
You're still working on following up with all that stimulus, right?
There's lots, there's lots of stuff. Yeah, we're not going to die on it.
And I got a call about phase two today, Bob. Anyway, sorry, go ahead.
So that, that's the concept. And this, I think this has helped for Audra too, so we don't pound the heck out of any topic. But the idea is to put some flesh on the bone so that the select board has something to look at a draft of something and then comment and bring it back one or two times to get it to the board's approval. For, in time for April 12th, which as you well know from the invite, is our very early, but unfortunately the date for approving the warrants for the June ballot. So with that, we were looking for some one of us, yes, ma'am?
Do you want to volunteer?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The budget warrant.
Budget, a budget process warrant?
Yep.
Yeah, I can see that. Do you have a motion?
Oh, the charter stuff, the...
A, a secret ballot for the budget?
And I just want to say that Deb is worth the weight in gold and with all this research. That's really helpful and interesting.
And she's willing to be engaged, by the way.
Exactly. And, and I've actually, yes, yes. I would love to work with Deb.
Well, Sophie, I don't know.
I know, I'm a lot in for punishment, but this one is a...
The nominator and the person who changes her mind?
Yeah, please do.
Motion?
Second.
Motion made the second discussion before she says anything else. Oh, okay. All's in favor?
This one has a finite date.
Five zero.
That's what I like, huh?
Yeah.
Before you back out.
They all have a finite life. So there's the next one, which is our, well, it's not, it's developing a draft road opening ordinance, similarly for, that we discussed in, again, a couple of weeks ago, liaison for that one.
Well, the road, so the road open, there's already a lot of interest from the pathways committee in the road opening ordinance. Yeah, and I think... Before, you're going to not be well received on the pathways committee as co-liaison if you give that away to just Bob.
Ah, I see, again, that's...
Be part of the package deal.
And I think it might evolve into more of a broader right of way.
Yeah.
That's what we hope.
Yeah.
So I'm definitely not your guy, because I have no idea what...
No, you'll be good at this. I think you, I think it'll be some, well, I think this pathways committee will probably have some comments and would be involved. That way, they've been asking quite a bit about this.
Well, no, I'm saying is, I get concerned when there's too many cats trying to herd the, the cows. But...
Oh, you want me to take it on as well?
No, 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 no. I don't, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting anybody. I just think that they'd be careful. This, this intent here is the, the, the board, I think, the board member liaison to be working with the town. And I'm not sure how we play a bunch of committees into this thing. I don't get that.
For, for this particular item?
For this particular, I am only, no, I may be missing this goal.
I'm not sold on this whole, like, liaison to the issue. I mean, I get it, early, so I don't, I do think it could get out of hand, but I don't, I think there's a lot, we already looked at this once.
Right.
There's, it initially came up because of the natural gas situation. And then when the threat of that kind of went away, the urgency went away. But it does, I don't know, there's a...
I think it's a little bit like...
The point I want to make is, the point I made last time when, and my bad too, this, this should have been brought up in an earlier meeting to say, yes, we want to do this. Because I remember specifically in the last meeting, someone said, yes, we will do this ordinance because it's going to be easy. Now, all of a sudden, I'm hearing, this isn't going to be easy because we're involving a bunch of characters to head to whatever we're trying to develop here. So it is easy or it isn't easy?
And I guess, just to be candid, it's very hard to workshop ordinances in select board meetings when...
Yes.
And it's much better if one of you who has a very strong interest in this, because let's just admit it, not all of you have strong interests in every single thing that's brought before you, has the ability to sort of work with whoever's developing it. And, you know, it might be that you don't even want to be that involved. You just want to be informed and communicate back to the rest of the board. And that's perfectly fine. But it's more of just having that point person on the select board on an issue-by-issue basis. So that I'm, like, you've, you've, as a group, you've made that decision, this is the point person, so that nobody feels like I'm privileging someone with information or withholding information from someone.
That's all it is.
It's just kind of getting to a point where I really need help doing this, because I can't give you everything, all of you, everything, all the time. I have to sort of pick and choose. And I don't want it to be left to me, because then certain people are going to feel like you're not getting everything that you need. And certain people are going to feel like, well, why are you giving me this? I don't care about this. So I just, I need to kind of bring some order to the way that you're operating. And this is the best way I can think of right now.
I mean, I guess I'll just say it. I, I will be asking lots of questions about this. I do have an interest in this. So if we're trying to just say...
That surprises me.
Really?
No.
But I'll be also transparent in the fact that I think that I do see it as an opportunity to take greater control over town.
Sure.
Right of ways. And that we don't, you know, there's a lot of public benefit to be derived from...
Sure.
Our easements and right of ways. And that we don't always extract the maximum value in sort of defense of the public good when it comes to sewer easements, or when it comes to sidewalks, or when it comes to telephone poles, whether or not some of those should be separate ordinances or not, is a, is a separate question. But, you know, are we, should, you know, the water company tearing up the roads and things like that? There's a lot, I think it's a very interesting topic. And I hope I don't have to ask all my questions in a select board meeting.
You don't. No, you don't. It's not, that's not the point. If you have input, I mean, besides the fact that I'll block your email if I were, no, I'm just kidding you. No, there's no, there's, this doesn't stop anybody from communicating and discussing any one of these with anybody. It's just that, for the, for the benefit of our...
Can I be the...
What?
I mean, I'm not arguing with the system. I think I understand it. If, if she's looking for, I would love to volunteer to be the road opening ordinance liaison unless we'd want to be...
We can change it to czar if that feels better to everyone.
How come I was not offered the czar position?
You can be the czar of the secret ballot budget.
It takes a little more longevity in the select board.
With my last name, you know?
That's right. Zarina.
It's kind of natural.
Do you want to do it?
I do, but I don't want to, if that's a strong interest of yours, then I don't think it's beneficial.
I'm happy to help.
Why don't we, why don't we do it together?
All right.
Okay.
There'll be two, two people, I need a motion.
That'd be great, actually. I bet we'll...
You didn't make a motion yet.
No, I move that...
You got to have fun.
Bob Fanchani and Allison McKellar become the select board liaison to the draft road opening ordinance for town meeting.
Motion made the second discussion. All's in favor? Five zero. And I want you to all note how she pronounced liaison.
Liaison.
All right, with that, I'm going to move on to our town manager report. Does anybody have any significant questions for Audra on her report? And/or, Audra, do you want to emphasize anything in particular in your report?
So I would like to add something. I got, I received an email tonight from the town manager of Lincolnville about the January 24th for a meeting with the Lincolnville Board.
Yes, that's...
To talk about the lake dams. And they're, they asked a couple of questions. Where do you want to meet? In Lincolnville or here? Do you want a 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM start time?
6:00 PM for sure.
I knew that would be an easy one.
Well, I don't, I don't know the capabilities of Lincolnville in terms of broadcasting. I have no idea what they, are they similar to us now?
I don't.
I suspect, suspect it would be here, if that's okay with them.
They, they're very open to it.
And, and in that regard, we, we had already pegged the 24th, so it's great. And I think that we talked about the development of an agenda.
Yep, they had some items that they listed already.
And I think we had some potential items. So with any agenda items from our side, please submit them to Audra for that meeting about the lake or, you know, we co-habitat that lake, our two towns. This is the subject matter that's going on.
Higher watershed, we even share, actually, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. So...
That's a good alignment.
So we'll do that, Audra. At 6:00 PM on the 24th here.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, I just have, I have a medical appointment that day in Boston in the early afternoon, so I may or may not make it back in time.
That's fine. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, with that, anything else, Audra?
I think apart from that, the only thing I'd like to mention is that tomorrow will be the meeting of the parking management working group.
Oh.
And it's a very important meeting where all the findings will be presented, as well as recommendations on a parking program for Camden. And those will be workshopped.
I see.
So, 10 o'clock.
Here.
Here. Thank you.
Well, it's on Zoom, sorry, Zoom.
It's all...
There'll be some people in here and some people...
They'll be here.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Audra.
So there's a Zoom option for...
It's, it's primarily Zoom, like John Burke will be on Zoom.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yes. Can do.
Anything else, Audra?
Can I ask a follow-up question to the parking?
Yes, of course. Go ahead.
Study reference. Where do we stand on the public meeting idea of having it at the middle school or...
Oh, I, I haven't asked the middle school about using that venue. But I'm sure, yeah, I mean, it's from our, from our end, it's as easy as if we get permission to do it, setting, you know, setting it up and that kind of thing.
I feel like this is going to be one of those things where we find out that nobody's been following along.
Oh, absolutely.
And that we have to start doing whatever necessary or possible to kind of, you know, shake the, shake the community and, I don't know what the right way to say that is, but get people talking about it.
Yep. Oh, I think there's a lot of talk about parking. I mean, I, there is a lot of talking about the parking study.
Because each time that we've had, you know, the groups that have studied this and really good quality recommendations based on data and many other things, it's then been sort of presented to the public. And there's been a small mob that has sort of chased away the discussion. And so I hope that we can be, can be brave and, as a group, and make sure that all this work, you know, maybe amounts to something. Can always go back if we don't like what we decided.
And I just remember also, it's going to be on the 25th of January, so...
Is it public meeting?
The, the public meeting for the parking study.
Lincolnville?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, good.
Just thought I should bring it up now.
Thank you. Good idea. Anything else, Audra?
That's, that's all the...
All right. Select board reports, Sophie.
Ah, so the, I have one thing from the public school. There's an open house, I think on December 27. At a middle school. Let me just make sure I'm not saying something stupid.
That's correct.
Marcus sent me an email. And they, they would be delighted if we showed up. They would like to make it public and have as many people as possible visit the middle school.
What's the meeting?
It's just an open house.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Take a look in the community and check out the school.
Number 27?
December 27th, exactly.
I think that community has never had a chance to go visit the middle school because of COVID. And so they're inviting people...
It's an all-day event?
For, it's a self-guided tour, I believe.
Yep.
That, so people can go and check out the new middle school for the first time.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Sophie? Anything else, Sophie?
No, I just, you know, I, I, I want to thank all my fellow Camdenites, are they Camdenites?
Camdenians?
No, so I walk, again, you know, I, I walk around the town, and thank you so much for putting nice Christmas lights. Our town is beautiful, and everybody is making such an effort, it's so creative, so thank you, makes me happy.
Comment on the creative parade?
That parade was something, it was so much fun.
It was.
It was the first time I attended the Christmas parade, there were so many people, I think we really needed it.
Yeah.
It was completely jam-packed, it was great.
It was an energizer. Marco?
I was going to add that the Christmas parade was terrific, you really missed it after a year, it's, it was, it was a great event, and I have to say that town staff did an amazing job putting it together, and especially, we have the best Christmas tree on the, this, at the, at the, by the library, and I think in years and years. It's full and well-lighted, and it's just great to go up there at night and look at the tree and look at the lights all over the town, it's just, it's a great place to be. And I'm just going to mention the Opera House, the Christmas, the Lunesa Irish Christmas Show is sold out, and we've had a lot of success this year at the Opera House, and already they have soundcheck shows, usually Friday nights, and they have one scheduled for the 7th, for the 14th of January, for the 28th of January, and on into that, so they're always terrific shows, there's safety in the seating, they, they put spaces between the seating so you can feel very confident going to the shows, but they've done a terrific job in this last couple difficult years of putting on great entertainment for the town, and I like to thank them, and, and all the town employees for the whole year. It's been, so many people have worked so hard in very difficult situations to make sure that the town is thriving and doing well, and I appreciate everyone's work.
If I may, Bob, I'm sorry, I was just looking at the, the middle school open house is from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on December 27th, I just wanted to amend what I said, it's not all day, it's 27th between 10:00 AM and 12:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Allison?
I think I've already shared all that I have to share.
Thank you. You're very efficient. Mr. Matt?
I'm sorry, I...
He wasn't prepared for that.
I was not, that's, the end of the year, well, thank you for that Christmas present, and, so I'm just going to wrap up my year with broadband, you know, I guess in terms of some of the things that we're looking at as a representative to this topic, this would be the idea that a person would be coming throughout the year, Audra, I guess, and just reporting in, and so I'm coming to the close of my year on this project. As you know, I'm stepping down, I'm stepping away from MidCoast Internet, and with a sense of closure, in the sense that we should have, as we, fingers crossed, as we come into our first Select Board meeting of 2022, we should have that Axiom report, which is called a feasibility or viability report or study, so that should be something that we'd be able to review ahead, the goal is either the first or the second meeting of the year. Based on that, we should be looking to appoint a new representative to the Board of Directors of, as we've discussed, of MidCoast Internet, the Development Corporation, again, this regional utility, and as Mark and Audra, and as we've discussed, we're also trying to fill the ranks, so again, someone here who's going to be in a leadership position on the Board of Directors, representing Camden, also looking for that grassroots person, because so much of the next phase of this project is getting something called pre-subscriptions, so should this thing move forward and you raise X number of millions of dollars, what you need to do is make sure that you are going to have people subscribe to this particular enterprise, because it's a revenue-based, or revenue-based in terms of the system, the way this would work in terms of a business model that you need to, so, again, just briefly, as we come into 2022, the three things we're looking for as a Select Board would be to be able to review and discuss the feasibility study from Axiom Technologies, two, to appoint a Board of Directors representative to replace me on the board, and three, a community advocate, someone who is good with technology, someone who is good in terms of communication, marketing for this particular project. So, that is MidCoast Internet.
Thank you.
Hi.
Have a question, Allison.
Yeah, so I feel like that's a lot of new information, and I'm kind of thinking, I don't know how we're going to appoint a community advocate for something that I don't really know anything about at this point. I mean, I know some about it, but I, I, I guess I have so, a lot of, I have so much faith in you and your knowledge, and I want to make sure we sort of extract the maximum value from you, because I'm not sure that anybody that I've seen is even close to your depth of knowledge, and so I would be, I would, I would love to get a little bit more like of a presentation or something from you, just to make sure that we're...
Rules and responsibilities of various positions.
Yeah, just like, understanding where, like, I want, I don't know as much, you know, very, very much about the technical aspect of this, or I just, I'm sad to not have, or nervous to not have you as our representative, because it was kind of like a bold thing that we did. Anyway, so I just think that, it sounds like, like, we need a little bit, we're going to need a little bit more, like, presentation, or...
Yes, yes, yes. Well, one of the things, Allison, that I didn't show up for the meeting just to listen yesterday, so, Mark, just to listen about the Director, Board of Directors meeting, clearly, in my mind, what's evolving is different tiers of responsible Board of Directors shouldn't be a Board of Directors, involved in driving the business, with a plan, et cetera, but there's already designated Community Relations Director in the way of Mr. Dorr, and so they're starting to create that second level of operations, which I think you're getting into more than anything, they're both, they're all important, but they've got to separate those two, a Board of Directors shouldn't be, in my opinion, talking about, you know, what do we want in a marketing plan, that should be an assignment that somebody has to take going forward to help develop and put some, you know, some language to that, and what consultants were working, they were discussing that yesterday. So, you're right, there's a lot going on, and we can do that probably as we look at, but I think it's, you've, you've taken a multiple-faceted role on this whole startup thing, it's just blossomed very quickly, it's gone beyond, I don't care who it is, one person, it has to be, we'll have to split it up.
And that's certainly the goal, is to, and to your point, the transition is gentle, that's the idea, that, that, you know, and to find the right people who have the knowledge and have the energy and have the commitment to make this thing go forward, and they also need to, you know, the communication aspect is paramount at this point, so much moving forward has to be about making sure that the communities really know and understand what's going on, because if they get blindsided in any way, that's going to be really a difficult, so again, my goal is to gently transition, to your point, Bob, to find people, not just a person. In terms of having a vision and driving something like a startup, that's what we did for the first year.
Yep.
And so we had dynamic personalities, you had a Matt Siegel, you had a Deborah Hall, you had a Nies Mungar, you know, these are people with kind of big personalities.
Yep.
And traveling the state, you know, dog and pony show all over the place, that's great, but that's when you're developing an idea, now that you're, it's an intention versus implementation.
Yeah.
And we've come to the point where we're personally close to an implementation phase, and we need to divide it up into a larger team, first of all, you know, if that's two people, three people, whatever it's going to be.
True.
And again, Mark has been great with the Coalition, Jeremy has been great, so, just so you know, we've had a good team for the Coalition, but now as we move forward with an actual utility that's going to be a business entity, we need to, again, evolve that team.
Business mentality.
Right, and just, because I think I'm a little confused as to like what the role of town staff members are, and what, a lot of the model was, to me, sort of a midco-solid waste model, and we all kind of joked about that a little bit, but that it was a, it was a separate entity that then sort of had its own responsibilities, and we, our contribution was a, appointing a, a board member, but then, in terms of, like, what, what was the level of commitment in terms of staff time, or what, you know, community outreach, is that the responsibility of the Camden Select Board, or is that the responsibility of the Coalition, or...
It's standalone.
Like the idea of us appointing somebody to be like...
It's not even appointing, it's finding the team, so...
Not our job, or is that...
Well, I just bring it, it's, you know, whether it's here, or whether I'm at Mariners, or whether I'm at French and Brown, you know, trying to shake the tree, and I've spent time with Mark and with Audra shaking the tree, just trying to find those people.
It's evolving, that's what, it's evolving, and that's what Matt's pointing, I think is absolutely true, and I think a lot of the questions you're asking, Allison, are very good, don't, don't have answers for them yet, that's going to evolve to the next phase, which will be all driven by this independently set up in a district, very similar to a midco-solid waste in a way, with, with no direct staff involvement in this at all, other than there is a little bit of Rockport at the moment.
Is there worry about Jeremy's time some, and what...
I am, I haven't seen it.
No, Jeremy's not, it's more, Audra has been just a, just a force of nature in terms of knowledge, a resource, and doing the best they can not to tax her over the last year, but to really work with her to the best of her ability and the best of her time, same with Mark, has been, yeah, so, just in closing, that it is, just want to make sure, it is its own independent entity, that was by design by the inter-local agreement, that you're setting up a municipal regional utility, there are representatives to it, but as important as it is in this hand up there at the high level of the Board of Directors, is this whole idea that it is going to be community-driven, so as a community, and that's where the Select Board comes in, and I travel around the state, I travel around Knox County, trying to get the communities to understand if they want these things to work, that they are going to have to be proactive.
And there's currently four, is that correct?
Yes, as of Monday, we now have the, what we call the Core Four, so the utility is comprised of Camden, Rockport, Rockland, and Thomaston, and with others in the wings.
I wonder if there'll be crossovers to the road opening ordinance, telephone poles, and are we going to bury the lines, or are we going to...
No, oh no, God, that's too expensive.
I feel like we, I would love just a presentation at some point, I know I keep saying this, but I think it's, if, in terms of getting us to the point where we can be knowledgeable advocates and stuff, it would be great, and it sounds like there's a lot, sooner rather than later, just have you kind of give a, hey, guys, this is kind of what I know, and...
And there are, so, just, you know...
There will likely be an ask to the Select Board that's going to come out of the work that Otelco did, so...
All the more reason to start educating us then.
And so I think perhaps, and I'll leave it to your discretion, that I'd be happy to do that starting the year, there, again, there's been a dog and pony show that we do in terms of a short presentation, Mark, we just did it for Dave Merrimott, again, probably for this group, something similar, yep, you know, it's, again, it's about 12 slides that we talked through it.
Perfect.
All righty, with that, I'd like to have a motion for us to leave Select Board meeting and enter executive session under MRSA 405E Legal Rights and Responsibilities.
I'll make a motion that we move into executive session under MRSA 405E Legal Rights and Duties.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion, all in favor, five zero, we'll give a few minutes for Bruce to do his thing, and say goodnight to Mark.
Goodnight, Mark.
Goodnight, Mark. Goodnight, everyone, happy Christmas.